You know, in in advance of the public testimony, show those things and then let the public testimony be what it is and allow.
But the fact of the matter is, there's been a hundred and thirty-five, hundred and fifty grand spent already.
Yeah.
Which will be assessed.
So, and I would say the part of that hundred and fifty grand was to do the reestablishment of drainage records. So at some point in the future, if the Drainage Authority wants to do that full excavation down to where the bottom um of the ditch, we still have that right because we did, we went through the process with the regulatory agencies to say where that as constructed and subsequently improved line is. That doesn't mean today we have to do that full excavation.
Sure.
But we could sometime in the future, so choose.
And Mr. Chair, that should be good for many years.
Yeah.
Determination of benefits, not just.
Yeah.
You know, not just today and tomorrow.
Well, and if we, if hypothetically chose not to do the repair, that would leave that culvert alone on Fifty-Fifth, too.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So maybe that's something that we have a Drainage Subcommittee meeting soon to the, uh, to discuss that and bring back a recommendation of scheduling that hearing, just to kind of close that loop and.
Right, yeah.
Um, see if the public wants more work done at a greater cost or satisfied with the the progress so far. I mean, just bring up some good questions. We, we didn't, we didn't mow or remove trees on both sides of the ditch on this one like we have on other ones, so there is some considerations there, um, just for the landowners to be aware of.
Mr. Chair, we just have to clarify to let them know that we had to do this process, first of all.
Yeah.
And then this process will stay in place.
And hopefully, we're gonna hear from them. The testimony about what they want done.
Correct.
Because I think you're gonna have both ends of this.
Yeah.
You're gonna have the ones that say, don't spend any more money, and you're gonna have a couple that are gonna say, fix it. So that's what we're gonna have to hear. Go from there. All right, anything else?
No, I was just information.
All right, we're adjourned at ten fifty-six. Turn it back to the Board Chair.
Uh, we'll go back to nine twenty-five and Monty.
Our first subject is Minnesota paid leave. And we've been calling it PFML up to this point, but I understand the state wants us, wants us to call it Minnesota paid leave. MNPL.
What they say.
So we wanna get with the program. So, Mr. Chair, of course, as you know, we're, we're in discussions with our bar units about the, the cost sharing arrangement on Minnesota paid leave. This action before you today is to address cost sharing for our non-union folks. Uh, and I recommendation to you is that the point eight-eight be split fifty-fifty between employees and the county. And again, that's consistent with what we're attempting to achieve through, through negotiations. So the action before you again is to, is to set that as a fifty-fifty share as of January first.
Mr. Chair, Monty, question, and you probably said this already, so forgive me, but um, I know that we chose to go with the state paid leave plan.
Yep.
Is that a one-year, a two-year? Do we have an option of looking at a different plan in the future?
Yeah, we can, we can move, uh, after this first year.
Okay.
I understand, once you go private, though I believe you gotta remain in private, it's either two or three years before we can go back to state.
Okay.
You can't just jump back and forth, you know, year and now, you have to stay a little bit, so, yeah.
So there's a potential in a year where you could review the state plan?
Absolutely, right, possibly go to the private plan, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna move for the fifty-fifty contribution from the employer and employee.
Second.
Most men made in second at the move to a fifty-fifty for the non-union employees.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried.
All righty. I think your next item is, is, is an administrative report, and I've got three items to discuss if I could, Mr. Chair. Uh, one is, uh, the first one is on the government center. And, uh, what I'd like to do, Mr. Chair, is address a couple of assertions that we've heard in social media regarding the government center. I think it's, uh, time has arrived to address those issues and perhaps clarify some, uh, I would describe as misunderstandings about how we funded certain things. So the first assertion I'd like to address, Mr. Chair, is that we didn't budget for FFE, which is furniture fixtures and equipment. I've seen this assertion that we did not budget for that. So I'd like, you'll have to bear with me because I'm gonna show you a bunch of numbers, and if I'm going too fast, please tell me to slow down. But here's a, here's my illustrations to show that, um, the provision of FFE has been acknowledged going way back. Uh, when you first engaged with Contegy, they shared, for example, various project estimates during committees of the whole, which included provision for FFE. I'd like to show you one formal acknowledgement of that, and that occurred at a meeting on June twenty-third uh, this year, where the board awarded the bids for the project. And you got in your packet, this budget from Contegy. And, uh, the column on the left basically represents all the low bids from the twenty-seven different contractors, and out to the right were various alternatives which the board considered. Down here at the bottom, but I'm gonna actually enlarge this if I may, just a bit. You can see what's described as owner items. That includes FFE, which is, the estimated provision for that was one point five million. And then, what's called internal IT, I'm calling it tech, we call it tech. That's, for example, audiovisual, uh, door control systems, uh, cabling and so on and so forth. Uh, provision of one point two million for that. Again, these are described as owner items, and then you can see the, at this, at the time, it was described as asbestos removal, and then finally landscaping. So, uh, what Contegy then brought to you was the, the core twenty-seven, uh, contracts. For example, for dirtwork, steel, um, uh, um, all the things that go into a building, basically, plumbing, electrical and so on. But I wanted to stress is that from way back, when we first started talking about this project with Contegy, we saw this allowance for FFE, which is furniture fixtures and equipment. All righty, let's keep on going. So that answers one question, was it in the budget? Did we acknowledge it? The answer is yes. Let's move on if we may. July first. Now, I think maybe this is a number that folks maybe kind of got thrown off by. So on July first, the board then formally awarded those twenty-seven contracts. And you may remember this, number of sixteen million four-nine-nine-three-one-six. So this was the list of those twenty-seven contracts. For example, you know, there's some electrical, uh, masonry, uh, uh, heating, cooling, and so on and so forth, again, all those core things which make up a building. So I think folks saw that and thought, oh, where's the furniture? Well, again, it was in there all along. Let me jump ahead then. So again, this looks familiar to you, this is a Contegy product. They produce an updated budget every month. So, let's just focus in on a few numbers. So there's that sixteen four-nine-nine-three-one-six. Sixteen four-nine-nine-three-one-six. Those are your core twenty-seven contracts. And here at the bottom again is the owner items, FFE, tech, uh, landscaping. They changed the labeling of that asbestos, the soil remediation, you know, that was removal of the contaminated soil, and also some asbestos-containing material. So, again, I'm just trying to document. It was acknowledged, it was in the budget. So the, the second part of this question is, well, do we have the resources to cover the cost of FFE? Do we have the resources? So do me a favor and remember that number right there. This is the grand total current project budget, twenty-four million two-thirty-eight. So please remember that number right there, twenty-four million two-thirty-eight. All right, let's jump ahead to the bond issuance. The bonds were sold on August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'm gonna skip a couple of pages, this is all from Northland Securities, our bond advisor. All righty, the bonds were bought by an investment firm called Robert W. Baird. All righty. So, what was deposited to the construction fund? In other words, what resources were made available between bond proceeds and county cash? Bond proceeds and county cash, twenty-four million two-thirty-eight. Twenty-four million two-thirty-eight. So basically, and the board identified this a long time ago, you were gonna devote two million of county cash to the project, and the rest is made up of bond proceeds. So you can see up here sources of funds, twenty-four point eight million. Two million is cash, the rest of it is bond proceeds. That was deposited with a trustee bank, US Bank. We draw down on that as we get bills from, uh, Contegy. They send us a batch of bills every month. Jackie goes in the US Bank, we draw it down, we cut the checks and we send those to Contegy and the contractors get paid. So this is answers the second part of this question, is were the resources provided for FFE? And again, I'm referring to the total budget, twenty-four million two-thirty-eight. What do we have available to fund the project? Twenty-four million two-thirty-eight. All right. There's another assertion out there that, oh, I should just, one more thing I want to point out. Is the board discussed on, I'm jumping ahead. On September twenty-third, a plan to acquire FFE. So you may remember we had this discussion about what's the way we're gonna go about this? And the board agreed to this plan where, uh, we're gonna do an RFQ and we're gonna send this out, GLT's gonna do this for us. They're gonna send an RFQ out to all the companies that are on state contract. We're gonna narrow that down to a couple and ask two of the top contenders to interview with you, and you make the final selection on who will be our FFE provider. I think it's a great plan, uh, identified by, by, by GLT to allow lots of more, lots more back and forth about what our furniture needs are, and also, too, to identify what per, what furniture we can repurpose. So I think that's gonna be stressed is where, you know, the furniture we have, how much of it can be repurposed to bring down our costs of new furniture? All right, so that was discussed. All righty, the second assertion I've seen in social media is that we don't have the resources set aside to demo possibly the nineteen-one courthouse and put in car, uh, put in parking. That's the assertion. We don't have the resources and we'll have to go back to the taxpayers again for more resources to demo the nineteen-one courthouse and put in parking. All righty. Well, back in February, uh, Contegy provided the county board with an estimate of what would it cost to demo the nineteen-one courthouse and put in parking? The estimate was one million two-sixty-six. So you've been, you've had an estimate for quite a long time of what would that cost be? So the second issue is, well, do we have the resources set aside for this purpose? The answer is yes. All righty, I'm giving you lots of numbers. All right. So, right now I want to show you, I ran this as of, as of in September. We have five point two million dollars set in our CIP fund. Five point two million set in our CIP fund, cash. Now, two million of that is for the project. Let's keep on going down. This is a spreadsheet that I use to track our CIP fund, our projects, what we have in terms of available resources. I'd like you to remember that five point two million dollar number. And you can, I'm gonna jump down to the bottom and then I'm gonna back up. So this spreadsheet ties to that, shows we have five point two million in cash sitting in our CIP fund. Let's jump back up to the identification of projects. All right, here's what I got highlighted. So, you can see on line thirteen, we've spent about one point six million on all what I call pre-con. So that's GLT. That was all the, the soil work done by Braun Intertech. Uh, those are the big things.
Mm-hmm.
Because you may remember, GLT's work with us went, goes back almost two years to, you know, uh, very much preliminary scoping, and then what they call design development, and then actually construction documents and so on, so that, that's almost two years' worth of expenditures, one point six million. There's the two million sitting there for our share of the, uh, the construction cost, the, the two million of cash. You can see, we, we, we actually spent a little bit, so before we got the bond proceeds, we had to use our own money to pay bills. So now that we got the bond proceeds, we're gonna just, you know, sit on our resources and spend down those bond proceeds first, and then once those are exhausted, we'll go back to this. So, yeah, we had to pay a few bills before the bond proceeds were available. And then there on line fifteen is the one-two-six-three-eight-three, which is sitting there for the possible demolition of the nineteen-one courthouse and parking. And again, I just want to go back up to show the number. There you go, one-two-six-three-eight-two, which is the estimate from Contegy on those two costs. And this shows you the resources are sitting there waiting for the possibility that those could be used for parking and the demo of the old courthouse. So the answer to the question is no, we do not need to go back to the taxpayers for more resources for this project. Uh, again, I just want to show is my, my total ties to the, the number I showed you above. So this is my spreadsheet, and maybe sometimes people challenge spreadsheets. This number right here is from our, from our, our financial system. This is IFS, our financial system, and it shows five point two million in cash sitting in that fund. Okay, I think that's, I want, again, I want to address two assertions. Number one, we didn't provide for FFE, and second, we don't have the resources available for the parking or the demo of the nineteen-one courthouse. Uh, let's see, I guess, Mr. Chair, my final thought is this. Is, you know, for folks that are watching this on YouTube or they read our minutes, and if they have questions about the building, uh, I would urge them to call me, send me an email. Uh, we're an open book. Uh, virtually everything that's happening with this building is a public record. I was thinking earlier, it's like, okay, what about any of this has been private? Really only one thing. The board had to have a closed session to talk about an offer price when it was gonna buy the property. Everything else has been done in open committees of the whole, board meetings and so on. So if anyone has a question, I would say, uh, please, uh, give me a call, send me an email, stop by. I'm happy to answer any questions that folks have about the project.
Mr. Chair. Couple of follow-up questions for you, Monty. Um, a couple, about a month ago, we went through this.
Oh, our, our financial statements, yes.
Just a, the, that spreadsheet is refer, I mean, not in this one here, but every year it gets audited, correct?
We are audited by law, by, yes, by, by an external independent auditor, yes.
Okay, now I want you to bear with me because I'm gonna read something from Benton County, Minnesota voters from a Darrell Watercott, and I just want to see if this is a true or a false statement. They have said employee parking at the new government center is going to be, uh, street parking until the old part of the current courthouse is removed and made on, made into a parking lot. This sure sends the message that they don't care much about the employees or we county residents who will be, who will need to fight for parking, uh, a block away. It says, and we weren't all, and why weren't all these hidden costs part of the original bids? Who knows? Or who, you know, you're going to need parking spaces for employees and county residents. You know you're going to need furniture, that's right, they didn't even have furniture costs in the bids. So we were paying for, so we're paying for all of these, uh, out of something else. And then it goes on to say, the total costs of this, uh, this thing is going to be well over twenty-four million. That was sold to us as such a great deal. We were lied to again. Is this a true or a false statement on pub, on social media?
Well, Mr. Chair, is, uh, when the new building is built, we're still gonna have this parking lot behind our building.
Mm-hmm.
I'm showing it above on your screen. It's not going away.
Yep.
This parking lot will be there.
Yep.
So in the interim, employees can continue, and we'll ask them to continue parking in this lot. Does it mean a little bit of a walk to the new building? Yep. Yep. And I should say, Mr. Chair, I, we are, we are working towards a solution on the old courthouse. We had our first meeting with our group about a week ago, we're meeting with the city soon. Uh, so we are working for a solution to possibly transform this area into additional parking for the new government center. Uh, but for, again, for initially, folks, our employees can continue parking in a lot that's behind this building right now.
Let me, let me rephrase this, Monty.
Yeah.
Did we account for furniture?
Absolutely, yes, we did.
Okay, have we discussed parking lots and tearing down the old facility?
At length, yes.
At length.
Yes.
So, in context, would you agree that this is a false statement?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, I just wanted that on the record because what I want to make sure, we sit up here and we get attacked on everything we do. And when, when people are reading things that are unfactual on social media, it affects a lot of individuals. And I just want to make sure that what, people gotta censor themselves on what they're reading because it gives a different light of what the entire situation is.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I wanted to add is, uh, is I, I have great faith in our employees that they will uh, not choose to park in these prime spots here. As you, you can visualize, of course, the new building will be here where I am showing on my mouse. These will be the prime spots in front of the building. And also, too, some here on Sixth Avenue. I have great confidence in our employees that they will not take these spots, and they will reserve those for the public, as they should. Um, and, 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 uh, so I, I'm confident that will occur.
With that said, I think we all sit up here, this, this should be common sense. We can't tear down the nineteen-o-one building.
Until it's empty.
Until the new building's up, so therefore.
Moved in.
We can't put a parking lot in until then, we're moved in.
You gotta abandon one building before you can tear it down.
I, I didn't, I didn't know if I was missing something, or, so, okay.
So, a-again, will, will we ask employees to take a little bit of a walk to get to the new building? Yes. Um, but hopefully that's just a short-term issue and it's resolved in short order when, when we possibly, again, convert this to parking. Yep. All right, um, oh, one thing I did fail to mention is, uh, I'm gonna go back to my, um, let's, let's jump back up, just one other issue to think about that. I think it's kind of, it's responding to the issue of, well, you know, it's gonna go over budget and so on and so forth. I wanted to point out that the construction, uh, budget includes, almost there, almost there. Includes a contingency. So you can see here, I don't have it highlighted, but it says contingency, one million oh-seven-three. That's five percent of what's called the DD, that's the design development estimate. So there's a five percent contingency built into this budget to help cover change orders and unexpected things that come up. So we have a decent contingency built in. And that's all I had, Mr. Chair. Again, just urge folks to, to contact me if they got questions. It's, we're an open book.
Well, and quite frankly, they should be contacting their commissioner because the commissioner should have the answers for them, too. If they refuse, if they refuse to get the answers, then that's on them. They don't have to agree with it, but they need the information.
For two years, we've been an open book, all of our cows and everything. It's all documented. Everything's right there. Alls they've gotta do is ask for it. All they've gotta do, instead of being on social media and giving their opinions, which is fine.
I mean, giving your opinion is fine, but it comes down to facts.
Do your research.
Do your research, and, and I'll tell you, I, with, obviously, the, I, I'm on AMC board, and I'll tell you, one of the comments that was made by a, by a, a board member is, boy, you guys are making a lot of public, um, you, you guys are in a public lot on this building.
Receptions, yep.
And he, and this individual actually ended up saying, do you realize that you guys are the twenty-seventh largest county? And out of everything that's going on, look at where all the other counties are at on building projects. We are, if not, close to the lowest-priced project in the state for a county.
Well, look at, I was looking at Meeker County, what they had to do.
Mm-hmm.
Because they remodel, what their levees did.
Yeah.
I mean, ours is respectable compared to that.
Yeah, I, I think I shared before, I was in Natazka County in June, they have two thousand more people than we do, so let's just say basically the same size. They spent seventy-five million.
And this is, this is going around the state, that, that, I mean, these projects are in the forty, fifty, sixty, seventy million dollar range. We're bonding for twenty-two million, basically. And, I mean, we have taken a beat, and it's noticed around the state. It is, I mean, legislators to other county mem, uh, board members. It's, it's very well noticed, and one of the comments was made to me, too, is, I mean, this, this goes right to business. It's like, you look at businesses that are seeing Benton County in the news, who wants to move here? Whether it's true or not, we just read things into the record that are completely unfactual. And this is what people are hearing everywhere, so.
Well, it's borderline gaslighting the situation.
It is.
It's, you're, you're purposely putting out information that's not true. It's, it's beyond disagreeing, it's unfactual.
Correct.
And to their points, they obviously have a right to their opinion, we all do. I'd fight to the nth for everybody's opinion. But when you're purposely putting out things that aren't factual, you're gaslighting a situation that's not in very good shape right now, statewide, nationally.
You know, just, just like Commissioner Kapinski said, one day, we spent fifty-six meetings that are all documented. We did our research, we did our homework, two years, you know? I personally have over four hundred and fifty hours into this facility. I know Commissioner Kapinski's got a lot more, because you're in IT, you know, I mean, we've done our homework.
All right, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you. Uh, let's see, if I, can I, may I move on? Yep, okay. Health insurance, so you all got your health insurance packets from, from Beth, and I wanted to mention to you that when, we asked the board to adopt the non-union health insurance a while back, uh, we were some, we were on the assumption that the increase was gonna be five percent. Well, we had some discussions with Amy from MMA and some clarification. And you may recall that part of the recommendation was that the deductibles will increase. So thirty-four hundred for single, sixty-eight hundred for, for family. And Amy said, under that assumption, the increase should be three percent instead of five. So what you all got in your, your packets was a three percent, and everyone else, the non-union folks, too, it's a three percent increase rather than five. So that's a good, it's a good news, good news.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, lastly, I want to ask you all, do you have any follow-up from me or thoughts from me regarding our conversation with the, with our county attorney recently? Any potential, uh, direction, thoughts, what have you? I'll just leave it at that.
Well, I think she made it quite clear that she needs a little help. I know it's not budgeted, but.
No, I, I think she made it, she, I, I think we, we worked around, we, we, we got an area to where it helped her out on, on the county attorney, the assistant, hiring a, another attorney.
Yeah, right, without any sort of conditions attached to it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, on the other side, I just want to make sure that, that, number one, we can find money for it, and number two, it, it's gotta be give and take on, on both sides, working together and, and stuff like that.
It was a very productive meeting. We'll just see where, where it takes us.
Okay.
For the future. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to ask.
I would say that this is gonna be something that'll be ongoing.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
From my standpoint, anyway, I'm not speaking for you guys.
So, Monty, are you looking for direction from the board as to whether, um, another office assistant or something like that? Is that what you're looking for direction on, or?
Well.
Um, that would be addressed, I think, during our budgeting?
Yes, so if you're inclined to, you could certainly discuss it, uh, when you have a budget cow before the end of the year. You could just certainly discuss it then, yeah. No, I am not looking for direction of, of, that's up or down at this point, no, no.
Okay.
That can be discussed later, yep. Yeah. Okay, I'm good.
I think there was a lot of things covered in that meeting, and I think there's, there's gotta be more discussion on both sides.
Yep.
In, in my opinion.
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I guess we now do Commissioner meeting updates?
I can go first.
Okay.
Um, I attended, uh, a Benton Soil and Water meeting on ten-twenty-two. Interesting, it was the first one I was able to make it to since I was, um, on the board. Um, and, uh, we did the BEP quarterly meeting on ten-twenty-three, and then, um, we met in the Sheriff's Situation Room to go over our, our county safety plan, basically. Um, and then, uh, and then Scott and I attended a redevelopment of the old co, county government center, um, meeting, so. Where I met.
Okay, I'll, I'll go next, uh, same thing, uh, but I was at Epic, and I ran into a lady, she ran into me.
Was it Avis?
Yeah. Well, she didn't give me the card to Avis, but, no, Michelle Schmitz. Okay, uh, and she worked, she's for Excel Energy, and, uh, we had a long conversation about moving that Highline pole. And she also wanted to clarify that if there's something else moving forward in the county, please let her know right away so she can start working on it, too, and I said, that's great information. I will let Chris know.
Who, who, I'm sorry, who was that you're talking to?
Michelle Schmitz.
From?
Uh, Excel Energy.
Oh, okay. Do they have, like, money for us? Do they have money for us?
No, no, it was just a conversation of how it went with the poll we had to move that cost us a million dollars. And, and moving forward, you know, if there's something else that she needs to be aware of, let her know right away so she could start working on the situation.
She didn't.
Did she didn't, she didn't mention that she worked with Amanda on that million dollars, did she?
No, we didn't. It was very light because there was a lot of.
Did she?
I don't know. I don't know who she worked with on that.
I know, but I just wanted to bring that up. It was good conversation, so. Okay, done, I think.
Okay. All right, uh, of course, back in October 21st, we had our committee of the whole and talked about a local option sales tax, which we addressed today. Uh, 22nd, had a Highway 23 uh, and a monthly meeting. Uh, 23rd, our BEP quarterly, Tri-County Solid Waste and the Foley Care meeting that evening. Uh, 27th, um, uh, county, I can't read my own writing here. Uh, uh, we had our COOP meeting, which Commissioner Benoit had mentioned. Um, 28th, Ditch Subcommittee Meeting, Commissioner Pop and I were at. And then, of course, that afternoon, Commissioner Benoit and I had a redevelopment meeting here. Uh, Monty brought it up before, but we are trying to schedule a meeting with the City of Foley to get their input and what they foresee in, in this area. Uh, the 30th, Tri-County Solid Waste again, but this time it was with Pope Douglas. It was a joint meeting between the Pope Douglas Board and our Board. Uh, Transportation Alliance yesterday, Commissioner Benoit and I were at that. Um, and I did miss Sunday evening. Commissioner Benoit and I were also at the 4H banquet and thank you to Commissioner Pop. His, his uh, non-presence created a spot where he was supposed to be speaking and it ended up being myself a little bit. But it was fine. It ended up, it was fine.
They go pretty, they're pretty metal.
It was, it's a great banquet. It's a great time to honor those, those people that volunteer and, and as we all know, when we do the proclamation for the 4H week, we get to see those future leaders, so it, it's always fun to get to that, that banquet, so.
Well, and it's pretty amazing that, I mean, there were some of them that honestly, 40 years of service.
Oh, yeah.
And, and more.
Yeah.
In, into that. It's, yeah.
Good recognition. That's it.
Okay, I thank you for going there. I had actually signed up to try and be there too. But with my children being in basketball and travel basketball and in the fall leagues before the actual leagues get going, it always comes down to, usually it's boys on one day, girls on another, and it, and I happen to have both, so. And it just happened to be where there's, it would have been over by the time I got there, so I apologize. Um, we did have a Central Minnesota Medical Services Board um, the other day, last Friday. Um, we didn't have a quorum for about 20 minutes, so, yeah, yeah. I took the 5:00 AM flight from Bismarck in, so I made it. So we uh, um, one of the things that we discussed is, is uh, maybe trying to set up a regional appreciation for medical responders, first responders, everything like that. Cause, cause Morrison does a great job at one right now.
Really?
Really good, up at Camp Ripley. So we're gonna try and model that after them coming up, so. Um, uh, my trip to DC, I think, was, was absolutely phenomenal for not, there was nobody out there. I mean, there, for people-wise, but every one of our legislators was there. Everyone. I mean, well, the ones that we were going to meet with. But uh, um, we said, we, we seen the Whip, Ammer, um, Klobuchar, Smith. All their top aides were there, stuff like that, and it went very well. Um, I thought, I think we, as a priority, the nice thing is, is we had Stearns County out there. We had Jake Anderson, the mayor of St. Cloud, uh, Benton County.
And just to clarify, mine's not working through APO.
That was through St., yeah, St. Cloud APO and because I'm the chair, APO takes care of our um, uh, our costs on that. But we were able to push our APO priorities out there. Sherburne was gonna be out there, but, but Rayanne, Daniel Oski had some personal stuff come up. But we've got a very good pact that we've started going out there and, and really lobbying for Central Minnesota. Uh, we met up with Megan. Phenomenal, absolutely, um, yeah, great. But um, uh, one of the things that came back is, is uh, their county one, county one pro, road project is, I think, I don't want to ruin it, but I think we're in good, good spot. So we need to get, we need to get all that stuff. Actually, going from meeting to meeting to meeting, we came up with a plan that everybody's gotta sign a letter. Here's the process we gotta do, and they need to get that information right away. As soon as we got it. Don't wait for it to be turned in. Let them turn, help turn it in.
Okay.
So I think uh, I don't, and in the bonding tour that we did, I think that went very well. Um, uh, I think uh, between the state and, and the feds, I think, I, I think county road, county road one will become a reality.
I get, so, can I, I'll do a follow-up on that. You know, Jared and I have.
Commissioner Benoit was there too.
Commissioner Benoit, but we've testified four or five times already in front of legislators, you know, and everything. All, all year, we've been at the Capitol for, you know, I don't know how many times. We, we spent a lot of legwork on this.
Chris has been on top of things.
Chris has been with us the whole time and we are actually gaining a lot of good traction.
Yeah.
Uh, I got one other thing to add. So Brad, Brad Bergstrom, Superintendent of Sauk Rapids, has been talking to me regularly. And uh, he opened and asked the question to see if the board would like to meet with their board January 12th, the whole board. To, just to have a conversation of what's going on with the building, with CASA One, and talk about, you know, what the school wants to do to them. So I just wanted everybody to know that he opened that invitation to the whole board to be there.
I think it's important too to note that the City of Sauk Rapids, the, the school district, Brad Bergstrom, they've been very integral in all of this, so. That's all I have.
So I had pretty much the same thing, the, the COOP, Benton, um, ditch, sub-ditch, my, we had a BEP board meeting after our last deal. And there's July 22nd, um, block that date, that's the taste of Benton County. It's gonna be at the Benton County Fairgrounds. Um, they're hoping to raise in that neighborhood of 15,000 bucks. They do have a sponsor already. It wasn't, um, they didn't want it out there who's sponsoring it, but it's one of the local banks that's gonna sponsor that deal. Um, hoping to sell a fair amount of, you know, food space and uh, it's gonna be in the hockey, or the.
Hockey arena?
Hockey arena part.
Hockey arena east.
Sports arena east. Yeah, sports east, yeah. Um, they looked at other venues there and that's looked like pretty much the, the best one to have it at, so. Um, couple of things, there's, she's got some things coming down the pipe that may benefit Benton County. She had mentioned is that could be bigger than a magnet.
Niron.
Um, she's always working on something, but they're trying to, they're trying really hard to make sure they can generate some money without coming back to this board, and I really appreciate that, so.
Well, that niron is huge for Central Minnesota.
Oh, my God.
I mean, that, they're our neighbor and that's gonna be big for the area.
That was all that I had. So committee of the whole?
There is none.
Well, thank you.
Better delete it.
You need to schedule a final budget cow. Unfortunately, the window for that is fairly small. Typically, it doesn't occur until after the TNT hearing, but then before final budget adoption. And in the middle of all that is the AMC conference.
Mm-hmm.
So uh, your, your TNT is December 2nd. Final budget option would be December 16th unless you have a special meeting. So it really leaves like Wednesday the 4th, uh, Thursday, I'm sorry, Wednesday the 3rd of December, or two, or Thursday the 4th of December, or Friday the, the 5th. Or the following week, uh, 11th.
I think it can be the 11th, sorry. I can't do, I can't do the 11th.
So you're kinda left in with the 3rd, 4th of the 5th.
Oof.
I could do the morning of the 3rd.
I can't do the 4th or 5th.
Okay, I can do the morning of the 3rd too.
12:30.
Thursday the 3rd?
Yep.
8:30?
Let me propose this to you, Mr. Chair.
6 o'clock?
It's the final budget discussion, but you also talk about elected official salaries for.
Yep.
26. Let me also suggest this to you. How about use it to talk about board and commission assignments for 26?
Amen.
Since there's no change in the coming board as of January, could we use that to talk about your appointments to boards and commissions for 26?
Yeah.
Is that okay? Sometimes these organizations are asking, they're already asking for it. Who's your pointee for 26?
Yeah.
It'd be nice, going into January, we could tell them, because you made you know, they're off at meetings right away in January. And they wanna know, like, okay, who's your pointee?
First week.
So I had that to your agenda.
Yep.
So that is Wednesday the 3rd at 8:30?
8:30?
Yep.
Wednesday the 3rd, yeah. Uh, Chris, it's here, if possible, committee of the whole to discuss the local, local option sales tax resolution.
Do you want to, I'll just, do you want to try to get that done before the end of the year? Um, sounds like schedules are filling up pretty quick, so. And this, the purpose would be to discuss the current list, discuss possible projects to add, and then set, I mean, a future hearing sometime after that cow.
How about Monday the 15th?
Of November?
Uh,
December.
Negotiations that day, all day.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I didn't, I guess we could back into November here.
Monday the 15th in November would be tough.
No, I meant uh, the, when I was.
Cause there is.
December 15th.
Yeah.
Isn't, what?
We're here for a cow on the 17th, unless it gets canceled.
Yeah, that's the quarter we're doing services. I know, we tried to set aside that date for our next tech meeting.
Yeah.
On the 17th.
Okay.
We need, we need, we'll tech in, we'll basically be in K.
How about after the board meeting on the 18th?
Is there, i- i- I mean, is there gonna be enough stuff for the, the other cow?
I, I have not yet seen an agenda yet, but I know they do want to have one right now.
Could we do the 8?
Talk about the Salem, Salem facility, I know.
Yep.
Could we do the 18th after our board meeting?
Uh, sure.
That works for me.
Yeah.
Since we're here.
November 18th for local option sales tax discussion. I have one other, Mr. Chair. It's, it's about to get the agendas on your dais. AMC is putting on, uh, this is really a replacement for its new commissioner training. They're offering something new. Uh, I think it is more of a basic uh, information for commissioners. It's January 21st, 22nd, 23rd. It begins at noon on the 21st, ends on noon on the 23rd. It's in person at the Intercontinental Hotel in St. Paul. Uh, you have an agenda there. If you'd like some time to think about it and let, let Beth know if you're interested in attending. Looks like a lot of interesting content. Um, again, it's, it's in place of AMC's normal new commissioner training.
Jared, is this gonna happen like every other year instead of the new commi, you know, because there's no new commissioners this year?
It's all up in the air right now. They're gonna be, there, it's, it will, it's a work in progress. You mean on the new commissioner stuff?
Well, this is, you know, and normally they wouldn't have anything this year because there is no new commissioner. So are they just gonna try to replace something with this?
Oh, I see.
You know, so we're gonna do this every other year from now?
They're, they're trying to come out with more trainings for everybody to keep them up to speed on things, so it's. Yeah, I don't have an answer for you.
Part of me says, yeah, it's a good idea. Part of me says, yeah, it's another expense for all counties to send people down there.
Yeah.
Does it make sense to register and then be responsible to let Beth know you're not going? Cause you could, if you want rooms and if you wait till January 1st.
You're not gonna get them.
Issue is, if Gil's at war, the hotels fall.
Usually these are a uh, like a set amount of people too, we've, and then they're solo.
Easy day would cap it, right? Um, that's true. Yep.
Well, I'm just gonna s- say it, be, being less than a year in as a commissioner, all this stuff is a learning process for me. So, yes, I would definitely be interested in going because I think that, you know, as much as I know about open meeting laws and whatnot from being on the township board, there's always new stuff coming out, so.
I'm interested, I just can't commit yet, but I don't have a problem putting a note on my calendar to cancel it in time, so.
If Beth finds out what the cancellation date is.
Yeah, and she would.
I'm interested too. It's just a matter of, I'm flying out the 24th for another vacation and I don't know if my wife will let me go.
You better talk sweet to her.
Yep.
Find out.
Be nice.
We can always write down with.
You can put me down and I'll, I'll cancel.
Same with me.
Well, if there, if there's no charge for cancellation, I can, I can put down, but I.
It says, no refunds will be issued after January 14th.
Oh, I'll know by then.
Yeah, I'll know by then.
So just put a note on your calendar the 1st of January.
Yep. Just put them all.
For the most part, these AMC trainings are very good.
They are.
They, they don't just waste people's time, because we talk about that in the, we don't want to have something where we're just wasting people's time and money.
Exactly.
You know, that, that uh, uh, that neutral deal, that mediation deal I went through. I literally wanted to leave the, the first night. That's how intense it was. And it was four nights. You learn a lot. So I will say that AMC just doesn't put something on to put it on.
That's all we have, Mr. Chair.
Motion to approve the cows, Mr. Chair.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
I thought there was another one.
Um, we can always add it.
Yeah, if you're.
We can add it next.
We can add it. I don't know what's up with government center. Are we adjourned?
Oh, um, you're talking about a potential uh, governor candidate coming to Sauk Rapids.
Yeah.
We adjourn, Mr. Chair?